You're gonna go someplace?
Uh, it's the Morse curve test.
Who does that?
Uh, it's automatic.
Oh, it is?
That way you don't have to, you know, multiple times,
Yes.
you know, do a test. We don't have to do it twice a day. All right, I'm going to you now, Betty. Are you all right?
What is it?
Hello, come on in.
Hello, how are you?
That's coming.
A board of selectmen meeting is opening, it's March tenth, and it's about six, almost six twenty.
All right.
And we're gonna call a meeting to order, and first we'll, before we start, you know, we'll say the pledge allegiance, all right? Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America,
He gets the flag of the United States of America.
And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, let's go have a seat here. Um, you wanna do the payroll warrant?
Yep, we're gonna invoke the rule of necessity because there's only two of us tonight.
It's two of us, Donny's away.
So you'll be able to, uh, vote on all warrants?
Yes.
We should, we should, so, um...
Did you read them all or?
Sure, I'll start off first with the payroll warrant, number fourteen dash thirty-six, for a total of a hundred and twenty-six thousand, one hundred and forty-two and forty-three cents. Do I have a motion?
I second the payroll warrant amount.
Okay.
And I do that under the rule of necessity because we have only two selectmen here this evening.
Okay.
In order for it to pass, we, we all have to vote. Donny is away.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'll continue with the next warrant, which is the bill warrant, number fourteen dash thirty-five, for one million, one hundred and ninety-five thousand and seventy-nine and five cents.
Second on the bill warrant, Jim.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And the last one is the deduction warrant, which is number fourteen dash thirty-four A, for a total of twenty-three thousand, nine hundred and thirty and ninety-eight cents.
Second on the deduction warrant.
Okay, I'm in favor of that?
I'm in favor, aye.
Aye.
Okay, and we'll take care of the property use permits. It looks like there are some on the table for us.
Yeah, we'll, we'll take a look at those, uh, before we go into executive session, maybe we'll do those while we're still in open session.
Okay. Okay, we'll do that, um. I haven't reviewed correspondence as yet, um. Jennifer House is here for her six-twenty appointment, so I think we should move ahead and take care of Jennifer's request if we can. Does that sound like?
Yeah, and I did look at the correspondence, uh, just some information, but I don't have anything, I don't see anything that we would wanna, uh, that needs a vote, so. But certainly, uh, hopefully you'll have an opportunity the next day or so to read the correspondence. So Jennifer?
You, you are requesting permission to hold a fundraiser on town property, um, and you're gonna tell us what the fundraiser is about, what it entails. Probably have some information for us.
Here is the property permit.
Okay. Do you have one for this agenda?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Well, I know about this, it's the Groveland Walk for Animals.
Yes, so...
Do you have another presentation for us?
Yes, so, what I would like to do is, for the MSPCA for am, the MSPCA, I went over a walk on the su- during the summer, and I found out, okay, I really like this, a lot of people attended, and I feel like, well, I love animals, and I'd love to help animals, so why don't I do my own walk? Now, I'm sixteen, and I think I'm old enough to be able to do this myself without people, like, people saying, oh, why don't you just volunteer for our walk, like, that's nice, I'll do your walk, but I wanna have my own walk. So, this walk is to raise money for the MSPCA for battered and neglected animals, and it will take place on May third, two thousand fourteen, from eleven AM to four PM. Um, it will be approximately one point one miles, and we will start at Perry Park, not the Congregational Church. I've changed that, and we will end at the front of the town hall and the library, and we're gonna use that for our activities. So, on the walk, there will be water for dogs and for people, there'll be about four to six stands, depending on how hot the day is. And then we will arrive at the front of the town hall, and so, we are hoping, we have heard from Sweet Paws Animal Rescue, they would like to have a stand. Um, the MSPCA, they'll have a few volunteers coming to, like, talk and stuff. And I would like to have a band, it's not a very, like, popular band, but it's, it's a good little small band that's, it's clean music, good for kids and stuff. And I know they kinda like, on a rise, I'm like, yeah, why not, you know, that'd be pretty cool.
What's the name of the band?
The Go-To.
The Go-To.
Yep, they are based out of Connecticut. And also, after the walk in front of the town hall and library, I'd like to have a dunk tank. Um, now, I know there's like insurance and stuff, and I have found insurance, I'm willing to buy it for that day. Um, the dunk tank, I was thinking of having a couple of people, like, not just like everyday people, but like more important people, you know, more important people in the town and stuff, go in the dunk tank to make it more entertaining. I was also thinking of having arts and crafts for children.
Like face painting?
Yeah, like face painting, or like make a little, like, dog ornament or magnet or something. And there'll also be contests for dogs, and the contests will include a costume contest, cutest dog contest, and a talent contest, which is sort of like tricks, like roll over. And then I will also give out awards for those dogs who win the contest, it will be gift cards and little ribbons for the top three. And people who raise the most money will also get gift cards. I will be selling T-shirts, and then the T-shirts will also be given to people who raise a hundred dollars or more and pre-register and donate at least ten dollars. I think that's like a great way to benefit the MSPCA and also give people a little souvenir, like, hey, I, I participated in this, I'm happy to be part of this fundraiser. I'd like to sell food, such as like pizza for a dollar slice and soda and water for a dollar, a can or a bottle. And the pizza will be, will probably be donated by like local vendors, such as like Delio's or Heyville House of Pizza. And I'd like to have an ice cream truck, but I'm not quite sure how, like, how to book one of those yet, so I'd have to look more into it. And to run the event, um, it would cost a lot of money, so we'd sort of base it on our sponsors who are, who are willing to donate money, and so whatever they donate can go to like the cost of it, and then whatever people donate will go to the MSPCA after the costs are covered. And so, I really think this is like a great idea to bring the town together, to raise money for a good cause, to help animals, 'cause I feel like sometimes animals are a little bit overseen, I know we have like a lot of fundraising and things on TV to benefit starving families and things like that, but I, this is a little different, and I feel like this would be a really good idea. So, if I'm given the permission to move forward with this event, I can contact people and companies for a more definitive answer on what will be included.
You did a very good job with your presentation, you've come with a lot of ground. We, uh, as a board of selectmen, have to ask a few questions
Yes.
about traffic concerns,
Mm-hmm.
um, safety,
Yes.
food vendors,
Mm-hmm.
um, ice cream trucks, I don't know what the permitting process is on that. Um, where you would set up, when you, for your band, where would, where would you think it would be when they walked from Perry Park up here?
So, I know this picnic table's over near the library, so I was thinking in that little area, it's not, they don't need like a big stage, they probably don't even need a stage. Um, for traffic concerns, I've already contacted the Grofen Police and let them know that I, I would like to do this event. And so, they have told me that instead of, we're gonna go up King Street, and then we're gonna go down Gardner, and then we're gonna go, we were gonna go down Route ninety-three, I think it's called, but now because it's such, it's a main road,
Ninety-seven.
Yeah, ninety-seven. We're gonna go down Elm Park to avoid the main street,
Mm-hmm.
and then they said they might be able to close down half that road going up, like, Main Street. So, we'll be able to walk on that road, and there'll also be, they said, we'll be able to get a police cruiser to lead us and follow behind us to make sure that the traffic is controlled. And concerning the food, I would contact the Board of Health and see what I have to do for that. Um, I found insurance online for special one-day events. Um, they will cover like liability and medical, um, you can do an additional person, which would be the town, as I was told, for up to a million dollars. And so, I'd be willing to do that too, I just would like to know like the other requirements for...
Did they give you, uh, a number with a one-day insurance policy, what it costs?
Yeah, it was approximately three hundred and thirty dollars.
Mm-hmm.
There's other add-ons, I mean, there's no, not gonna be alcohol or anything served, so, I just, I would like to know like more requirements for that, so I know what to add on to it.
Uh-huh. Do you have questions, Joe?
I'm, I'm, I'm very impressed, done really well.
Good job.
I'm assuming you have a group of people that are, that you've organized or organizing to help you with a lot of, this is a big, big event.
Yes, yes, I've been contacting Julia Pesek, uh, she is the event organizer for the MSPCA.
Okay.
She's sent me like some, like, programs and stuff of how they run things, like contact numbers for the T-shirts and things like that. And so, she's been kinda guiding me through this, also, um, I've created a Facebook page for this, and I have many people, especially adults, interested in helping, saying, oh, well, I will do whatever you need me to do for this event. Obviously, I couldn't like contact them for further notice because of...
So you're looking for a little bit of indication from us if it's possible at this point?
Yes.
Okay, um, the, this flyer here, uh, do you, how is money collected? And who is the check, or how do you collect money? Are you gonna be able to use credit cards or checks, and who is the check made out to?
Um, I am, I'm mostly cash, also, checks will be possible. Probably made out to the MSPCA, I'm still waiting to hear back from Julia at the MSPCA about that, 'cause I've asked that question.
Yeah.
Um, I'll also be putting like donation boxes for like items.
Okay.
Um, I was thinking one at the town hall, one at the high school, because I was gonna get like kids involved, 'cause I'm sure they want community service hours and they wanna walk. Um, donation boxes, I was thinking, I'm, I'm a good friend of Ann Brody, and so, she, she wouldn't mind me putting one in her office. Um, people would like to pre-register, I was thinking I could have it out of her office, so people can contact me directly, and...
All right, uh, so, yeah, uh, that detail is important, 'cause we have to verify that it is a nonprofit or, you know, endeavor.
Oh, yes.
And I would probably caution you to, you know, don't do as much with cash, do as much you can with checks, it's better that way.
Okay.
Because that becomes in itself another thing you have to manage.
Mm-hmm.
Also, anything that needs to be signed, whether it's a permit or an insurance voucher, at your age, uh, you won't, you have to be eighteen, so you have to have a willing adult that will do that for you.
Yes.
Okay, so, so those are my questions, and you had very good, very good job with the police, because obviously, crossing Route one thirteen, you know, with dogs and people, even if it's a few minutes, and if you already have the police working with you, then as soon as you're eighteen, you need to run for Board of Selectmen and a few other things, we could use you in town.
Yeah, well, I've, I've known the police, uh, for a while, so...
Yeah, well, so, I don't know, Betty, I think that probably the best thing to do is, right now, you're in the planning process, so maybe you can deliver in a month from now a detailed plan, and say, this, okay, this is what I, this, you know, this is what we're doing now, this is how we're collecting the money, here's the insurances that I'm getting or buying, or I already bought, or signed up for, here's what the health department told me.
Mm-hmm.
I'm guessing, Betty, I think that's probably the very next step.
Right, and, and I wanna make sure that that date, did, did you come in and talk with Nancy about that date, has anybody booked anything with the library or?
Not a, not as far as I know so far.
Does it have any conflict on, on the date?
Yeah, even the church, if you remember, I had, I had sent you a message about that.
Yes, I contacted the church, and they said because of liability, I should not have it on their grounds,
On the events.
On the ground.
But they do not have any events, they said that they're...
No meetings planned for that day?
No, they, um, they said that their, like, thrift shop is open that day,
Thrift shop.
Okay, all right.
But it doesn't really, it only conflicts with like the last half an hour, is that the thrift shops open with this.
I think you're okay.
Okay. So, managing the money, how you collect the money, getting the insurances is important, and then the health board is extremely important.
Food and health.
If you, you know, having food done by a professional restaurant or a pizza place really alleviates you from a, a lot of problems, because then we're working with their current license and, 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 you know, the things they already have permission to do.
Yeah.
So, the only thing I would do is, uh, either get volunteers to manage the pizza, or whatever's brought, you know, with trash and all that, or have, have the pizza place do it, not just deliver, but actually see if maybe someone will be there. Remember, there's trash involved as well.
Yes, yes.
Yeah, taking, taking care of the grounds, there are sprinklers out here on the lawn, you have to be careful.
Mm-hmm.
You know, if there's a band where they're setting up anything, that the sprinklers, they have been disturbed before, so.
Yeah.
But also, I think the nonprofit status is very important.
It's huge, yeah, that's our biggest issue for us, it's huge, Mrs., Mrs. Gorsky will explain.
So, you know, you're doing this in conjunction with, with the MSPCA, is that right? Because you have to file something, Joe, you're collecting money for charity?
Yeah, just find out how you can do that, if you can do that through MSPCA, so if I attend this event and I can write a check to MSPCA, that's gonna alleviate a, a lot of work and hassle for you.
A big burden for you.
Absolutely.
It is, it's a burden, otherwise, on public property, we have a serious issue with people generating money. You know, because we can't tell what's profit, what's not profit, and I realize you're not doing this for profit.
Why you doing this?
But we have our due diligence, it's called, that we have to do, we have to have on file that this is a genuine, bona fide, nonprofit event, and that no one personally profited from it.
Okay.
Okay, that's huge for us. So, I have a nonprofit organization for my soccer organization, the things that I do. We're not asking you to start your own nonprofit organization, maybe someday, but if you can piggyback on somebody right now, with the MSPCA, let us know as soon as possible, that would be huge.
Okay, so should I just email her and ask her for, like, some sort of thing, saying that it is a nonprofit organization? Or just that I can have people write checks to her?
Well, she, she needs to verify with you that she can do that, that she can collect money,
She pays for this.
and then portion some out to you for your costs.
Okay.
Okay, that's important too, so you need to work that out, but if, but if the collecting agency is the MSPCA, that's fine, that's easy, yes. Well, now we need something in writing, even if it's on their letterhead, saying that we're sponsoring this event, we're collecting the money, that's, that should be fine.
Okay.
You know, it's a little complicated, but that's, that's...
Yeah, there's a lot of...
When you get money involved, it gets complicated.
Yeah.
The idea is wonderful, you've done so much hard work and put so much thought into this. But those are the things that we have to worry about, and, um, and if you've spoken with the police, we might need a letter from them that they are on board with theirs, so it keeps, you know, everyone safe and...
Yeah, or even an email would work, you know, just so it goes to us, or Nancy, Mrs. Lu-Luwandowski,
Mm-hmm.
you know, somebody from the police department, say, we're, you know, we're,
We're aware of Jennifer's cause.
we're aware of this, uh, this event that we're gonna help along, and whatever detail it might give us, that's fine.
So, it starts at eleven, so people would probably be here earlier to register, correct?
Yeah, the registration is at eleven, the walk will be at twelve.
Okay. Okay.
We're thinking, we're not sure like how fast or slow people wanna walk, so we're thinking around one, people will get, everyone will get here, and then from one to four will be like all activities and contests.
Already, it's on.
Mm-hmm, so, should I, like, still, like, have, like, the volunteers at one, or should I still get them involved? Or should I, like, just make sure that?
I think you should go forward with your plans, the only thing I, you know, that we're, we're looking for is how's the money handled, proof of insurance,
Mm-hmm.
and permits for food.
What if, oh, those could be...
Okay.
Right.
If you do, if you do a detailed plan, that's, that's good, we're asking people that are organizing events to give us detailed plans.
Absolutely.
You know, little things like, such as, what about the electricity for the band?
Hmm.
You know, is it gonna be there, you know, who's gonna be responsible for that?
Yes.
So, I don't know, is there, is electricity down there all the time at, at the pines?
Well, you're gonna be up here, aren't you, on the town?
You're gonna be up here, you wanted to do a little...
Right in, right in the front, yeah.
Like here, right, right, so that's something to be discussed.
Yeah. Yeah, so that's important, you have a band coming, now we're, who is gonna get the electricity, you know, available to them?
Well, I know, like, we have a generator, and some people were interested in donating like cha- um, generators for the day to power the band, and whatnot.
So, a detailed plan is good, not only mostly for you as well, because it gives you this, a to-do list, you know, what needs to be done, so...
Checklist.
Joe, just to let you know, there is electricity in front of the town hall there.
Yeah, because we had it for zip trip to...
But then you'd need a letter from the Board of Selectmen saying that we can use it power.
Right, yeah, that, so it's rather than a generator, 'cause sometimes by the time you run a generator, you know, they're so noisy, you don't hear a band or anything anyway, so...
So you have, you have electricity, and we do on every holiday out front?
Yeah, because we, we use for Memorial Day and Veterans Day for the...
Microphones, right.
Yeah, for the microphones, so that the electricity does work out front there.
Well, let me make a motion, then, let me see, let me try this out, okay? I'd like to make a motion that we support Jennifer, uh, Jennifer's plan, um, for a Groveland Walk for Animals to be scheduled for May third between eleven and four, subject to, subject to that all necessary permits, insurance waivers, are, and financial disclosures are made that are satisfactory to the board, uh, by, let's say, uh, you know, certainly by the middle of April, you know, by approximately four weeks before the event. So, so in other words, you know, that's, you know, that's what we want to deliver, do I have a second?
A second on that.
Okay, can we have a discussion? Here's the, here's what I'm gonna say, so therefore, continue to do what you're doing. You know, now say, okay, I went to the Board of Selectmen, they gave me a green light, now really put this thing together,
Okay.
and then let us know three or four weeks before, hey, guess what, here's the permit, here's the insurance waiver, you know, here's, here's the details, I got it all done, I got it all figured out, and, you know, and then we're gonna say, okay, then we're gonna say, yes, absolutely.
Okay, um, for the insurance, are there any other requirements other than you are an additional, like, add-on, like the town of Groveland's additional for a million dollars?
No.
Okay.
Yeah, that would be fine.
All right.
Yeah, that would be fine, as long as, remember, it has to be, well, I'm sure they would know, but it has to be signed by an adult.
Yeah.
Unfortunately, yeah, at this point, yeah.
Excuse me, Joe and Betty, I'm just wanting to, has she checked also with the library to make sure that they're not doing, 'cause they're open on Saturday, so,
To make sure that day is clear, they might be having something. I know those, those are ours, yeah.
so sometimes they have different things happening, so I just say, you try to think of, don't wanna upset somebody else's program.
Yeah. And I know they have...
Check with, there's no book, oh, okay, yeah.
No book, I was gonna say, the books, book fair is going, okay.
Yeah, the book fair is at that weekend, I guess it's in like April, I know.
That's the only thing, try to make sure everyone's happy.
Yeah.
We, we didn't wanna get, she didn't wanna get too
Detailed, 'cause I didn't know.
detailed, at this point, until you had some sort of an indication from the board,
It's a chicken on the egg.
now that we kind of have that indication, that we can kind of pull up how they can, can pull the strings out of the air.
Yeah, yeah, we're fine, we're, we're...
I mean, I have like T-shirts lined up, I have volunteers lined up, donations.
It's, it's always nice to be over-prepared, than to say, oops, we forgot something.
Okay.
But, um, you know, it'd be good to check with everybody around here, that this is what's happening, you've been here to see us, you have a checklist, and you're gonna follow through on it, and when we meet you again, if everything's in order, it's a go, you just have to pray for a sunny day.
Yeah, yeah.
Yep.
Would it be a good idea to hang up some posters yet, or no?
No.
A little premature, huh?
Yes.
Okay.
But you did a great job.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Very well done.
But we'd be more than happy to get a volunteer for the dunk tank right now.
No, I'm always ready for that, I did it last time.
Okay.
Put me, as long as I can see the bottom of the tank, last time the water was too dirty.
A little murky. A little murky.
Okay.
This is well done.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. So Jennifer, make sure you come back, uh, sometime in April.
Okay.
Okay, towards the end of April, look at the calendar online.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, if you go to the website, on the lower left-hand side, there's a calendar, plug it in, see when the Board of Selectmen meeting is, and try to come in here, you know, middle, middle of April sometime, at the latest.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
All righty, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, well done. Very impressive.
She just went up a little bit, wasn't she?
Yeah, beautiful job, you was gonna, gonna go places.
Yeah, that's great. That stuff we wanna encourage.
All right.
I just wanna read this.
So I remade the motion to...
Did I second your motion?
Yes, you did.
Okay, all in favor?
All in favor, you have a...
Aye. She needs to provide the certificate of insurance, Nancy has left us a message.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay.
Subject to insurance, health board, and a detailed plan.
Very good, she's, she's very well prepared.
And financial disclosure. I'm just writing this down, 'cause I'm, I'm taking the minutes, you know...
For the minutes, you're the minute keeper right now.
Yeah, we're gonna keep her tonight, yeah.
Okay.
Financial disclosures. Thanks for adding that information too.
Yeah, with Tam, Tam, like you, I, that sounds very good, and you just like to make sure everyone's on the same page.
Yeah, yeah.
Exactly, because they could have an event, but, you know, but it sounds like she would've thought of all of asking everybody.
Yeah.
Okay, so, approved property use permits, and there's some more related, Joe, you, you guys...
Yeah, and now we do have a, we do have a letter from the road commissioner, actually, that does require a vote.
He needs a, additional forty thousand dollars in his snow and ice budget?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Okay.
Do you make that motion, please?
Sure, I'd like to make a motion to approve, uh, uh, the road commissioner's request, Bob Ericilian's request, for an additional deficit spending of forty thousand dollars in the fiscal year twenty-fourteen snow and ice account.
I'll second your motion, all in favor.
Aye.
I think Mr. Clement's fairly on his way in, uh...
Okay, that's fine.
Hi, John, how are you?
How are you?
Doing fine, seeing you both, doing well.
Thanks for coming in.
John, you wanted to, um, talk to us about the clerk's position?
Yes.
Okay.
Do you, I think some of the, with a copy of the, um, job description to the clerk some time ago, I don't know if you still have it?
I have it somewhere.
Yeah, yeah, don't, I mean, I brought copies of a job description that was used many years ago, and I know it was updated recently, um, in the past five years, I know Jim Jordan, uh, put a new, uh, a new job description out, I think it was a request from the Board of Selectmen, and also a job description to the fire chief at that time. So the one I have here is not up to date, but at least it covers some of the basics, to give you an idea of...
Good, I have, I have a copy here.
Great.
Um...
Do you have an extra chair?
I can make a copy for you, hold on a second.
Which version are you looking at?
I'm sorry, this is the fi- I'm sorry, this is the...
Fire chief?
Here's the, here's the clerk's position that was attached to it.
I, I have that, I have the old fire, I have this, but that's different, Ann, but they must've been at the same time, yeah, yeah.
That's the, that's the fire chief. Yeah, this is the one I have. Look. Look, that's, that's a good one. I'll give you the old. It has some historical value.
Okay. Betty, I'm gonna make a copy of.
For me?
Yeah. Okay, I got it.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk.
This one here, and then this is the, the new one, the W.
One that John just read?
Yeah, the historic, so, oh, historical.
Historical document.
Let me clean up my mess, cuz I'm, I'm a clean freak. Okay, John, go ahead.
Okay.
Thank you.
Well, thank you for letting me come in. I present myself to the board this evening regarding the fire department clerk. I come here tonight, one, in response to some comments that were made at a prior meeting by the current fire chief. Need clarification. And also offer the opportunity of the Board of Selectmen to ask questions regarding what was said previously and what was gonna be said this evening.
Okay.
But I think we should go back a little bit, just give you a little bit of history of the fire department clerk. In eighteen fifty, when the town was founded, the fire department was one of the first, uh, things to take care of. They established a fire department consisting of a chief engineer, which was the fire chief, and he appointed a clerk. So it's been around for a long time. And you'll find that the clerk's position has evolved into more and more detailed activities in terms of types of reporting, inspection, fire reporting, so on and so forth. We don't have to get into that. But the point is, it's been around for a long time and for a reason. The fire department and the fire chief and the members of the fire department relied upon the clerk to do certain activities that were separate from what the fire chief did. I believe that that should continue to be the way that the fire department operates. It should have a separate department for the clerk that has the records and can present them to whomever. And that includes the Board of Selectmen and or others and or the public. The public can ask for these records at any time. All right, so the clerk should have access to that, that's his function. His function is to keep good records, keep them for the department. And I can tell you that that has been done. You know, the clerk before me was meticulous, did a great job. We would sit down and work out our budget every year together. Uh, we had a good handle on where the department was at all times, if you recall, it was a number of years ago. We were in November, I projected a shortfall in the salary account. You can only do that if you're working directly with the clerk. And we had a problem, and we addressed it, and we had plenty of time to address it, as opposed to waiting till the end of the fiscal year and say, what do we do next? So it's an important position and it's an important support role to not only the fire department, but also to the, now, to the Board of Selectmen. It used to be to the Board of Fire Engineers who would have to deal with those issues. The way the department is set up currently, you have a strong chief. The way it was set up previously with a weak chief, I, as the fire chief, had to report monthly to the Board of Fire Engineers. I had four citizens at large that reviewed my work, my recommendations, all of my expenditures. Everything was approved together by the five of us. That kept everything on a straight and narrow, cuz you knew that out of one of those Board of Fire Engineers, if there was an issue or a problem, it was gonna come up, and I had to have the right answers. But a strong chief, it's the responsibility of the Board of Selectmen to do that now. Keep in mind, the citizens at large of the Board of Fire Engineers were all firefighters with many, many years of service. They knew the trade, they knew how the job was done, they knew what equipment was necessary to get the job done. So the evaluation was done on a monthly basis, it was a good one, it had some validity. To expect the selectmen now to sit down and go over the bills and pick out line items that might not make sense, I don't know, how are you gonna do that? I don't know who's watching that. Where does the clerk come in? Well, the clerk prepares the records, and they're available, and the clerk is available to consult with the Board of Selectmen. You don't have to deal with the fire chief if the clerk is appointed by the selectmen, which, that was the case, that might change. I'm just giving you a heads up. I think if you abolish that position, you're gonna lose the control that you voted to have over the fire chief. I, I was controlled by the Board of Fire Engineers. Just cuz you're a strong chief doesn't mean you don't have a boss, you still have a boss. Someone has to be watching them for the best interest of the community. Nothing against the fire chief, but when you only have one person making the decision, there's no alternatives. You can go off on a tangent, and you can be going in the wrong direction, and you'd never know it, and it was done innocently. Cuz if you don't, you don't have anybody to discuss these issues or to rebuff your issues, you're gonna go that way, and that's how major mistakes can be made. I also understand that the finance committee was approached with the chiefs recommended by you for next best for you, FY fifteen. And in his recommendation, it was to eliminate the clerk position. Now, why would that be? This position has been around since eighteen fifty, and all of a sudden, in this particular year, we're gonna get, we're gonna abolish that position? There's only one thing that makes sense to me. It's obvious that it's a money issue, and it's an hourly issue. If you take the clerk position and you put those monies into the line item, keep them as a line item for clerk, if you take that line item, abolish it, and you put that into the fire chief's slot, the fire chief's salary account, the hours are gonna go over twenty, which they probably are now, you know. You know, having been in that position for so many years, I know it's over twenty, twenty hours a week. But it was advertised as fourteen or fifteen, that's what you advertised, that's what people applied for, that should be the job. If you take the clerk position added to it, now you're way over, you, you, I mean, it doesn't even pass the straight face test. Uh, the poor guy, the clerk, you can't do all this in fourteen hours, it's impossible. So you don't ask him to do that. You ask the clerk to stay on. Put us ten hours in a week, no benefits, does the job, gets it done, he's been doing the job, the clerk, for two hundred years, a hundred and fifty or whatever.
Fifty, fifty.
You know, to, to now take that position and abolish it, to satisfy someone's goal to increase salary and hours so they can get benefits, you know, that's fine, but in fairness to the community, I think someone has to evaluate that and present that to the community, and, and, and really lay it out in line and tell them, explain to them what it's really gonna cost you. This is a slippery slope. You take these positions and you put them all into one. To tell you, it's gonna, you're gonna get into a situation where this town cannot afford it. We can't afford those types of salaries. So utilize the volunteers. I considered myself a volunteer for twenty years as fire chief. I was working way over twenty hours, but no one, no one would give me the benefit. I was a donor, we actually had a meeting, I said, this is what we do. And I'm sure the current chief would do the same thing. But we do it because it was a volunteer department, we did it because we loved our community, we felt good about doing something like that. You know, helping our, our fellow citizens. So, it comes out, you're working for like seventy-five cents an hour, whatever was it, fucking great calculated once, John?
Was it that much?
Was it that, yeah, and I said, no, you're right, that's, that's about what it was. But it was a salary, and we did the job twenty-four seven. And there are a lot of people, a lot of firefighters that are dedicated to this job, and they do it essentially on a long-term basis, a lot of it, not all of it. And then to see it start to dwindle away and fall apart bothers me personally, because we struggled to keep the morale up, the training up. I gotta give the guys credit for, for what they've done in the past, Selecting Green was one of them, that, um, you know, suggested we put a lot of money back into, or into the training aspect of it, it was excellent, that really made a difference. We have one of the best fire departments around, there's no doubt about it. I'm afraid you're gonna lose it, I really am, you're gonna lose the morale, you're gonna lose the interest in the fire department, you're gonna lose the volunteerism when they see that that's not really what gets rewarded. You know, reward your volunteers. You go full-time in this town, you're gonna lose it. That's what happens. That's how it does us all together, that's why it's a big mistake if this, if you get rid of the clerk. It, it's not for me, another clerk, I'm just saying, as a taxpayer, I'm concerned. Well, um, I, I think the other part of the job description is, I don't know if you, if you understand of what the clerk does, but he does a lot of things, and.
He or she.
This is, what?
He or she.
Right, my sheep, what?
He or she.
Oh, he or she, absolutely.
Absolutely.
Absolutely, it used to be a sheep. Before me, it was a sheep. Yep, Mr.
Arlene.
Best, Arlene, Arlene, one of the best dispatchers and works.
Yeah, she was, she's a great lady.
She did a little better. Dedicated, uh, these are run slips that every month we get from both stations. And it was, there was something that was, you know, we're talking about automating this, you know, getting some software to automate. Gee, look, you see something that's, how unique here? You know, what you see is people actually documenting in their handwriting what they did. And someone signs on the bottom. They're, they're saying, yes, I was there, I took roll call, we used to do an actual roll call. You would stand there and you'd call off the names, and they would say, here, 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 here. I would hate to give this up, it's a lot of work putting all this information in, but it's a lot of work.
When is this information, um, inputted, was that the right word?
It's input, yeah, that's fine.
Sounds right.
Uploaders or whatever.
But when, is that done after call? Is it done right away?
Yes, yes, everyone, at, before we, um, release the crew.
Yep.
Their names are printed in the book.
Yeah.
All right, if you notice, a little line here, so, which tells me that if someone writes in.
Oh, oh, so that tells you.
So I can tell, oh, someone came in and added their name.
It's a little nonsense, yeah.
That's right, so it's, this has been around since.
For a long time, eighteen fifty.
Long time, not eighteen fifty, right. Yeah, they just invented the printing press and.
Yeah.
They gave some of the first copies. Now, there are better ways, maybe.
How do you collect these, where do, where do these go?
There is a box outside of my office, or the chief's office. And they put the slips in there, otherwise I go to the station, my substation pick them up here, what they're doing. The captains are responsible now to look at these, make sure they're complete and they're correct.
Yes, completely, I'm sure.
Um, the other thing that I happen to notice is, if you notice, the, there's an officer in charge.
Sure, yeah.
If you will find.
What is that with a number rather than an A, a name, K something, K five, is that?
That is a particular number designation we give every firefighter.
Okay, every.
So why that instead of a name in that, that particular case?
That's a big question, that's something new, that's something new, that I just, uh, just saw this recently.
Yeah.
It's supposed, it should be. This is self-station, you notice that's not, yep, K four.
Yeah.
K two, so something must have happened. Someone must have said, put down the best name.
Okay, identify number of the individual officer in charge.
Right, and what you'll find is that that particular, uh, name, K two, is, I know that happens to be that firefighter.
Okay, that, okay.
Happened to be that, but that's a good, good point, good observation, that shouldn't be the case, should be a name there.
Just wondering.
Or maybe a name in parentheses, too, so we know for sure.
And so, what's this he's got here, seven or nine or something, does that mean how many people responded?
Right, well, yeah.
So, on this side, no one, no one's going to be able to add something.
Right, so you didn't put the lines here?
Yeah, nothing, that's what.
When I input all this information, my spreadsheet gives me a nine in the morning, to match it up, so a lot.
Yeah.
This also is how you determine how many hours they get paid for. And it also depends upon the time and the date. If it's, if it's really involved, and you have like four runs back to back, and you can only pay them for two, three hours. So you have to determine which firefighter gets paid.
Yeah, yeah, got a budget like everybody else.
Well, it's, it's, it's really a legal matter, because if you had three calls, did you have a minimum two hour callback?
Yeah.
In cer- certain periods of time, so if you have three calls back to back, do you pay them for three calls? Or do you pay them the number of hours, so if someone comes in on the first call, they get paid for two hours.
Right.
If they come back within the hour, they get paid.
Okay.
Someone else comes back, they get paid for two hours, it gets really tricky.
It does, yeah.
So you spend a lot of time in there.
Conscientious about watching.
So there's a lot of, a lot of, yeah, it's just number function, you really have to look at this and evaluate them.
Exactly.
And, um.
Okay.
Sorry, well, yes, that's, that's just the runs, that's, that's.
Yeah, it's just one aspect.
That's one aspect. The new, um, software, I, I haven't seen it, I'm not familiar with it, I don't know what it can and can't do, but I'm sure like any software, it can do everything. But, does it get you where you wanna get? Does it, does it give you the information that's really important, or the documentation that's really important? This works, I don't know why we have to change something or fix something that's not broken, there's nothing wrong with it, as long as the clerk is doing it. If there is no clerk, you probably do these some software, you know, you're gonna need something, you know? And I'm, I'm thinking that maybe that's what they're anticipating. Uh, the same thing goes for the drills, all the drills are documented, uh, and signed off, you know, keep track of that. On the warrants that we're doing. This is the typical, I just did the, different accounts, your salary accounts, uh, chief, clerk, and then all your purchases and services. The old fire chief's account, anyways, I give the, um, the, uh, the, uh, the accountant a listing of all the purchases for the month, this is done every month, so it breaks it down to all the senses, and you can see where the money is going. See, uh, see certain things that keep coming back. Let me think of this, I see a lot of this.
Sure, does everybody have yours on the line?
No. No. And there's something else that that's not, that's not the news. You have, the engineers would have a fit of their service.
Would.
But anyways, that's me, the engineer, that's not why I did this. And then, so then you break it down, nine salaries, and then you have just the purchases, not the combined, and then, and then you have to fill out your actual reimbursement request for firefighters to spend their own money to.
Sure, exactly.
Right, and that comes out, and you see the numbers and so on.
Like, that's why those individuals were listed as vendors, cuz they came in.
That's correct. That's correct.
They put in their own money from their own pocket, they're requesting reimbursement.
That's correct. And you see the actual salary that they sign off. Now, the engineers, the reason I, this is what gets signed off by someone, and in this case, the fire chief.
Yeah.
In the past, the board of fire engineers would look at, that's what they would get.
Yeah.
If you had all the bills and everything else that went with it. But they would have to sign off on every page if they agreed with every purchase.
Oh, they would? They'd come through this?
Yes, that's right.
Okay.
They have every bill, and they know pretty much where the vendors are always coming
from.
Interesting. Pretty good.
Now, on the big payroll, which comes out, for all party numbers, that comes out in December, just before Christmas, and the other one in June, and then in July, pick up for the month of June. That's very intensive because now you're dealing with, you saw the run sheets for one month, and now you're talking six months, twelve months. There's a lot of number crunching and that takes a lot of work. So when I took over this position, under the new chief, first thing that, first order of business was to turn my laptop in.
You had to turn it in?
Turn it.
What was the reason?
Well, the laptop was purchased for the chief. But I was.
Using it.
Using it to do this work. And we do have a computer in the office, but it is effectively unusable. It doesn't, it simply doesn't, can't do the job. Got, I think, a four hundred and fifty-six megabytes of RAM that just enough to turn it on. You know, you can't put a file in it and run it. So it's kind of a joke. So the incident command vehicle has a computer in it. It came with a computer. The chief has two.
There's one in the command vehicle?
Command vehicle.
And you turned one in that you were using. How old was that one, John?
Command vehicle?
No, no, no. The laptop.
Laptop, that's probably about four years old. I'm not, I lose my own, so I always use my own anyways. Previously, until I got one. It's not a big deal. And I have to work, just trying to give you a feel for the working conditions. I have to work during the day and request enough to do in the station at night during office hours. And that's the time when we really, that was like quality time, when the fire chief and the clerk could get together and say, what are we doing? Where are we going? And, you know, bear budgets and things like that. So I'm not really involved with that anymore, which is a shame. But again, that's another issue, another time. Well, I think the message is that, at least my message to you folks is that someone has to be on top of this department, because that's your role now, the fire department.
We are the fire engineers.
You are, you're now the fire engineers. You're responsible for it. The other thing is, if you take the clerk position and all the inspector's position, I know it's been tossed in a little bit to move everything onto the chief's end of things, that really changes the job description for the fire chief. We just went through a job description, an effort putting that together. We spent a lot of time with it. The position was advertised based upon, you know, that set of criteria. And I think it would be inappropriate to simply put all this into that, into the chief's office, on his lap, without some serious thought as to whether that makes sense and or possibly have to be advertised a position. It's not the same position. It hasn't been there for a year. And I mean, that's, when people look at that and they say, what happened? It went from this to this within six months? So I'm just, again, giving you a heads up that that would not sat well in the general public.
Let me ask you a couple of questions.
Okay.
The fire clerk's position, I realize that it was created initially by laws stemming back to eighteen fifty. What was the more recent history? Did the fire board of engineers request a transfer of funds from the fire chief's salary account to fund the position at some point in the not-so-distant future? Give us a little history on that.
Well, there was a request to transfer the funds, she had an acting clerk, and I believe officially I'm still the acting clerk.
Right. And that was approved by special town meeting, correct?
I believe, I can't say that for sure. I don't know for sure. I know we had a meeting here. And it was voted on, he only discussed it, and I believe the finance director said, yes, you can do that. I know there was some concern about collecting two salaries, you know, from the, but I guess what I got from that meeting was that there was a special provision, or provisions to allow that.
Or.
I don't wanna call it emergency conditions, but you had a vacancy, someone had to do the job, and that's all it was.
So the fire board of engineers appointed the fire clerk, and the money was transferred from the fire chief's salary account, and I'm gonna verify this, approved by special town meeting. So effectively, now that we've eliminated the fire board of engineers, naturally the board of selectmen will take over the job of that entity to continue the appointment of the fire clerk and the appropriation of funds until we would, for whatever reason, deem that to be a position that we would not wish to have if that ever were to be the case. I want to read a section, if I can, also for the public and also for Betty and for you, John, as well, because one of the things that is kind of amazing to me is that we've gotten some feedback from people that we have made decisions about the fire chief's request for an expansion of his role, and we've granted that. We're getting feedback where people say, you know, why did you do that? Well, we haven't done that. What we have done, we've been good listeners. We are very respectful. I can probably talk on behalf of Betty and myself and Donnie. We're respectful. We've invited people in. If people have ideas, we don't prejudge them as to whether we think they're great ideas or not-so-great ideas. We just say, well, if you have an idea, you wanna speak to us, please come on in. So, but we haven't materially changed the position from the way we advertised it.
I fully agree with you.
And we haven't even contemplated changing it. And in terms of removing positions, this is directly from the strong fire chief law, section forty-two. Let me read it to you. He shall have and exercise all the powers and discharge all the duties conferred or imposed by statute upon engineers in towns except as herein provided, and shall appoint a deputy chief and such officers and firemen as he may think necessary, and may remove the same at any time for cause and after a hearing. So in any municipality in Massachusetts, if a fire chief who falls under the provision of section forty-two, strong fire chief law, you can't remove people without cause.
Of course.
And without hearings.
That's correct.
So I hope that there's some folks in the fire department that are watching this tonight because we've been blamed, because we've had an open door policy and allow people respectfully come in and make presentations, they've assumed that we've given away, you know, we've actually changed the job description and approved monies and so forth. Now, I'll read something else to you. There was a minute, this is directly from minutes of the meeting from the finance committee. The fire chief is asking for a hundred and fifty percent increase in his salary from eighteen thousand nine hundred and twenty-eight to forty-six thousand eight hundred in order to increase his hours from fourteen to thirty and improve effectiveness within the same budget. The chief presented documents, this is the finance committee minutes, because you had mentioned that, so I actually requested a copy. Chief presented documents which included his projected key areas of focus as well as the detailed job description for the Groveland fire chief position. The changes to the budget would include the elimination of the engineer stipends, clerk's salary, and decrease, a decrease in drill wages and expenses. So this basically is essentially the, what you're talking about is essentially the presentation that fire chief laid, made to us. And we welcome dialogue. This is a proposal. This was proposed to the finance committee, was not voted on. On March third, the finance committee is going to convene again to approve these minutes with the changes. But I just want everybody to know that we haven't made any decision about any proposal having to do with the fire chief. We welcome dialogue and I'm thrilled that you came in. And I'm thrilled that I've learned more about the fire clerk's position because in my mind, and we don't have to make a, I don't think we have to make a motion tonight, in my mind, I have believed from day one that the check and balances that the fire clerk's position provides is essential and should be maintained. And it's not the prerogative of the fire chief of this town to change that because we appointed you. All other officers that fall under the authority of the fire chief, again, rumors going around and things we're getting blamed for, but people can't lose their jobs without cause and without hearings. So I just wanna.
I agree.
You know, I just wanna put that out there.
No one loses a position without, because one person decides something that, and now we are the fire engineers, as you said. People, I know they got very angry. We got letters, we got calls. We got people talking about us in fire stations and, you know, we did not make any decisions. We didn't sit here and say, yeah, we agree, this is, you know, this one's gone, this one's gone, we're gonna roll this line item into something else. We didn't do any of those things. So, you know, and I remember before you even said that tonight about the checks and balances, you said it early on after Jimmy Jordan had left, that we need to have checks and balances. We need to have it in the United States of America in Washington. Sometimes it always doesn't work out, but you need to know that people are, you're not doing something in a vacuum.
That's right, you should be watching.
Should be, and about fairness and parity and, thank you for coming in and tolerating us.
Pretty funny way.
Coming in.
I use Microsoft Excel for all of my spreadsheets. I don't know what antiquated or whatever software other people think I'm using, but the accountant and I can share our books totally, so we have compatibility between the two departments, okay? I don't know what the new software can do or can't do, so I just throw that out, so we're not that old-fashioned. The software was not from eighteen fifty.
Yeah, I didn't think so.
Well, thank you.
I'll go ahead and invent it, the internet then, Eddie.
All right, well, thank you very much.
Thanks, John. It's very helpful. Appreciate it.
Sorry if people have, you know, have done things that we did or didn't do.
Have a good night.
Thank you.
Okay, take care.
Look at this, I crossed it out, started preparing this, played on my desk. Did you have one of these?
No, what is this?
Well, it's already passed. It's February twenty-seventh. I don't know why somebody would have given you that, maybe because, maybe because there's some names on here they thought I'd enjoy seeing.
Oh.
I don't know. I didn't know you had one also.
Did you read this?
No, I haven't read everything. Hello?
Who's coming by saying, oh, hey, how are you? Go ahead. Social time. Social time. See you guys later.
Bye, Bill. Hi, Bob.
Hello.
Tracy, how are you? Good, thank you.
So Tracy, we're going, Betty's gonna announce executive session, and I don't think we're gonna come out.
Okay.
I don't get to take a walk down memory lane?
Yes. Do you know what this pertains to?
Yeah, it's gonna be an executive session issue. I can explain what that is.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. I just wanted you to read it because that was researched for us.
Bob, we're going into executive session for you, right?
Yes.
Okay. Do I have a motion to go into executive session under master and rela, chapter thirty-eight, section twenty-one A, two, to conduct contract negotiations with the fire chief leg?
Yes, I'd like to make that motion.
Okay, and I'll second your motion under the rule of necessity.
Under the rule of necessity.
I don't know if I have to do that for the fire department. I just have to do it for another department. And we'll do roll call vote?
Yeah. The more, yes.
Of course, yes. Tracy, we will be done at that point.
Okay.
So it's everything done?
We, I think that's fine, don't you, John?
Absolutely, yes. I don't think we need to return, no.